All right, works.
You got it.
Um, hello Ethan. There's a couple of other guests here. I'm gonna let them all in. I have Steven, Wendy and Nick Napoleon. I'm gonna let them in now. Okay?
Looks like dinner time at Wendy's.
Does.
Well, we're welcome to come over and have dinner with us if you'd like.
What do you have it?
Corned beef and cabbage.
Oh nice.
And wine instead of beer. And I'll glass for me.
I'm uh, I don't know if I'll bake it the whole month, but I'm, I'm doing one of those dry January.
He started that. It lasted four days.
Well, there's nothing like a planning board meeting to test you on that, John.
Yeah.
Ethan, are you with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm scrambling, but I'm here. Yep.
Alright. I just wanna maybe touch base while Ethan's scrambling, whatever he's doing. I'm Jeremy Martin, Planning Development Director for the town and, and I'm kinda running the Zoom link here, so I would ask that Ethan will probably run through the ground rules, but this is a, it is a workshop for the planning board today. And just kinda continuing where they've been for the last couple of years really on this issue, so. If we can just let, make sure Ethan is the moderator and if, you know, things get out of, out of control, I want Ethan to make sure he's, you know, sometimes Zoom meetings can go hairy and I've heard recently that there's been some meetings that have been Zoom bombed again, so just throwing that out there. I don't know if you know what that means, but I've, I've, I've witnessed some of them, so. Alright Ethan.
Okay. Alright, well, this is the Camden Planning Board Workshop of Thursday, January 4th. And we're gonna go over sort of where we're at with the, the latest. And then get right into the nitty gritty. So Pat, I'm glad to see you could make it. And I think we're expecting that Lucia will not make it. And Matt as, as well is, is unavailable, so we're a little bit late. I do note that there are a couple of people from the public who have joined in, that's great. We welcome you all to the workshop. The, the last workshop we had was live in person and was quite robust in attendance and we really almost operated it like a public comment session, which was not necessarily intended, but we wanted to make sure the people that showed up have an opportunity to speak. And likewise, we will afford some opportunity today. If folks from the public do wish to jump in, we may try to limit that to brief comments and maybe we'll pick a time period where we actually, you know, expressly allow that. But again, we do welcome people joining and listening. I did wanna just start off again by, I did have a chance to again review all of the public comment that we have received to date. And I did wanna, oh, I guess I should follow the agenda here before we jump into all this stuff, so. We did have, we do have some items on the agenda that we need to take care of before we jump into the workshop. So first, any public comment on non-agenda items? No, I don't see any, okay. And did we have any approval of minutes today, Shenley? No minutes, okay. So workshop peers is on the list, but I don't think this is gonna take very long. Jeremy had some information he wanted to pass along. So I will put that out first and have Jeremy, why don't you go ahead and jump in and let us know where we are on peers?
Sure. Pick it up off last week, I did say I would kinda get some information together on how, what other communities are doing and how they're regulating peers. More really about what type of standards they're using and approval criteria. Because as you, as I laid out last, last couple of weeks ago before Christmas, we can't do an outright ban. We really need to kinda dive into it much deeper and what I have been doing recently is I've been looking at other towns, their approval criteria, as well as the state Natural Resources Protection Act, as well as the Army Corps, their review criteria. And I wanted to just share my screen, hopefully, if I can. And I'm going to, I think you all see some, see that right now?
Yes.
Alright, perfect. This is the approval criteria for when you would review a peer. This is projects that fall under chapter 290, article 12. There's a process and you know, we've, some of you, I don't, I think all of you have been on a site plan review project and at least subdivision. There's approval criteria that you use as the board, you did it for peers, right, previously? That you use as a board to determine whether or not an applicant and a project meets certain criteria. And what applies for peers in Camden, for you folks under the, in the planning board, are these, the general ones that apply to every other project in town, preserving and enhancing the landscape, erosion control, relationship of proposed building to the environment and neighboring buildings, vehicular access, surface water drainage, public utilities, special features of development, exterior lighting, emergency vehicle access, and then we get to special, additional special criteria for peers. And then K down doesn't apply at all. So when it comes to peers, a lot of these other ones don't really, aren't really applicable. I think most of you found that in prior reviews. Sure, certainly exterior lighting does on a pier when an applicant wants to put some lighting on the pier, it has to meet the standard. But emergency vehicle access doesn't really apply, public utilities. Generally surface water drainage, except for maybe what, how it's affixed to the land. Vehical parking doesn't apply, so a lot don't, doesn't really apply. What does apply are, is section J. And, you know, it doesn't really give you a lot of review criteria. Says the project must, must not cause undue erosion on or near the site. I think that's a significant one. I think we talked about that last time. But then, and then also the degradation to marine life or in or near the area, and certainly that is important too, but that's, that's it. There's no other review criteria that the planning board necessarily uses in their review of peers. And based on that, I'm gonna stop sharing, cause that's all that it is. Based on, you know, your, the prior workshops and discussions and the public hearing on peers, I, I think your, you know, your concerns and you know, about peers that generated your possible desire to look at maybe prohibiting them. You know, goes well beyond just those two standards. So I think it's important that if you're real, you know, wanna move forward, that we do this and look at these other standards. And I will say in the harbor ordinance, that has much, much more involved review criteria than the review criteria that you folks review. And so I, I think looking at those is important and I'll, I think I shared those prior to you under, when you guys reviewed a project up here. But I'm, I'm gonna put those together and, and kinda come up with a, you know, a plan and at least laying out what other towns are doing and what other options are. I think it's important, you guys identified public access, you know, along the, the areas for the colonial rights of, you know, fishing, fowling and, you know, navigating. And, and so I think I'm gonna put those together, get those to you, and then we'll take it further. The select board next Tuesday, the moratorium that's currently in place, voters approved in this past November, some changes that were identified by both you and the Harbor Committee. But those are only applied to existing peers, they do not apply to new peers, hence that the, the ban continues on any new peers. So we're gonna have to, these moratoriums last for 180 days by statute and by public hearing and vote by the select board, the initial vote by town voters. That, that moratorium ends on January 21st, so next Tuesday, the select board's gonna have a hearing on extending it another 180 days. I just wanna let you know, I had to, they're gonna have to extend it because we do need to, regardless of where the planning board goes with this, we do need to kinda codify. We can't continue this moratorium forever without really moving this forward, so they're gonna have to extend it to at least have it applied to new peers if the idea that, you know, your, your, I, whatever you're thinking doesn't move forward, we gotta be in a place that we can, you know, bring the standard to new peers as well as the existing peers, what voters approved in November. If that makes sense to everyone, I know I probably said a lot in a hurry, but that's where we are. Do you have, wanna chat about that at all, Ethan? I, you know, I, I'm, I'm looking at wildlife impact, I'm looking at aesthetics and views, public access. Those are the kind I reviewed, the meetings and the discussions you've had. Impacts on the envi, you know, wildlife and marine habitat. And in addition to sea level rise, erosion certainly is an issue. We've, we've heard about that and I think we've received comments about erosion and impacts from peers on adjacent properties. I would add too, that the state has some new mapping that there, that the DEP is looking at to, I think, roll into the significant wildlife habitat section of NERPA, which is that Natural Resource Protection Act. That's looking at kinda more coastal dune areas and there are three areas in or near Camden that are identified on that new map. And I think they're taking public comment on those right now. There's two areas specifically in Camden, one on either side of Spring Brook, where Spring Brook runs into the ocean, empties into the ocean. And then there is an area in Sherman's Cove, which we already know has some significant wildlife habitat area there, and then there's an area at the border with Rockport, which would be the old Colly property. There's an area there that is looking, they're expanding that wildlife or that dune area, protected dune area over there. So I wanted to share that with you and I also have some maps of the significant wildlife habitat, which I think is important for your review of this stuff too. Does that all make sense, Ethan? It's not something that as a staff, we can't like, you know, put something together in a hurry on this. It requires a lot of work, so we're doing the best we can, hence the need for another need to continue the moratorium out.
Got it. Yeah. Thanks Jeremy, that, that's helpful. I don't have anything further at this moment unless anybody on the board certainly feel free to raise any questions or concerns that you have. Pretty much in general, the, the criteria you've outlined are the ones that I think we should be focusing on. You know, I don't think that the, the, the planning board current review criteria is quite sufficient and then you've already highlighted how we can supplement that by looking at the, the aesthetics and the, and the access issues, so.
Can I just add one thing I did see today? Cumberland has a provision that says for peers, in order to preserve that colonial right of fishing, fowling and navigating, your pier must be designed in order for, for people navigating in that tidal area, intertidal area to be able to either now walk underneath it or have stairs over it, over their pier system to continue that right. So that, that is something that other communities have done and we certainly don't have that. I know that's come up to you folks in the past.
Yeah. I see John has his hand up.
Uh, thanks Ethan. Jeremy, I've got maybe a question and a comment.
Yep.
As, as one of the board members who is a little less supportive of the prohibition in all cases. I did review some of the material that you gave us earlier and I noted that one of the cases that was cited used the criteria as to whether or not there were alternative methods for that property owner to get to their boat in the water.
Yep.
And was that a, a state requirement?
Yeah, that, that's in, that's in the Natural Resource Protection Act. That's a standard in there.
So we don't need something like.
Be honest, I'm not sure how, you know, I don't wanna say this, you know, in too much of a negative light, but you know, I'm not sure how much review the state, to be honest, gives you, gives some of those questions in there, when they review those permits, to be honest with you. I'm just.
Well, maybe that should, maybe we could double up on that as a Camden measurement.
Right.
And then the second item that seemed to be of concern, the, a, a number of board members was, you know, the size of some of these newer, more modern peers that they were getting oversized like a lot of things in American life. And maybe there's a requirement that could get at the, the point that the pier needs to be as short as possible to get out to deeper water. And I've relied more on a, a boater than, than I am to come up with what a, a suitable depth would be. You know, it's four feet or something like that for most, most power boats and a sailboat might need, you know, a six foot draft. But there's a number out there that, you know, might, might allow for a pier
Yep.
without it sticking out further than it needs to.
Yeah, I, I, there was a standard that I reviewed that had that same, similar, very similar standard to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Right, so it sounds like we're, we're still in a pattern of, of waiting a little bit for more from, from Jeremy. I think I encourage everyone to look over what he does send us and consider it, and then we will hope that we get this extension on the moratorium and then move from there.
I would add, it might be, it might be helpful for people to maybe, if you are interested in this subject or have an opinion, to let the select board know they're having a hearing on it on Tuesday.
Got it. Thank you.
And, and also Josh, I see Josh Moore's here, Ethan, I don't.
Yeah, I was just about to ask, is anybody from the public here or Josh, who's quasi-public official, wants to jump in and add any, any comment? This would be a good time to, on peers only, this would be the time. Josh, would you wanna jump in?
No, just basically just wanted to, you know, thank you guys for keeping, keeping this going. I, I think Jeremy's information from the last meeting was certainly eye-opening for me and I did read through that, that case law and all of that. So obviously this is a big discussion. This is something that needs to be, be had, sort of. I'm pleased a little bit that we're hearing it sort of separate from the moratorium. There's a moratorium in place and then there's also a discussion about peers and standards and all of that. I think they really are sort of, they're related, but there's two separate topics.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks Josh. Anyone else wanted to jump in on peers? There, there should be a hand raising feature on Zoom if you, if you wanted to do that. I've got a lot of different people here, so I can't see everyone at once, it doesn't appear. I don't see anybody wanting to jump in on peers. Okay. Thanks Jeremy. No one else on the board? Any comments? No? Okay. So we'll look forward to more information and, and the results of their meeting with the planning, the select board, et cetera. Okay, so now we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the short-term rental workshop and once again, I wanna just lead off the discussion with some basic information. One, one is that I, I did, as I was beginning to say earlier, before I realized it wasn't on the agenda, it was off the agenda. That, I did read over the, and I'm sure the rest of the board has read over the packet of submitted comments. And I think we're still seeing the, a situation where misinformation is, is being put out there and it's causing people to, to write in with concerns that aren't necessarily relevant to the current position of the board and we haven't voted on anything. We haven't sent anything onto the select board. We, we are still workshopping it. One thing that really, again, is, is hard to hear and it's, it's, it seems to show up in a lot of the comments is that we haven't invited public input. I think, you know, given the, the, the nature of the last meeting and the fact that we afforded everyone an opportunity to speak and we took all submitted comments and read them into the record. And the fact that we noticed these public hearings and everything else, I just, I just wanna push back on the fact that, that we're not seeking input from the public. That, that is something that we do value and we are looking at this with an open mind. The other, the other thing is just going back to the idea that I think, you know, and, and it is a workshop and the, the draft ordinance is a work in progress and as such, it's a dynamic document. And there have been some significant changes from when we first started looking at this, you know, even just as recently as six months ago. And one of those, one of the things that I, I definitely still want to address is that no one on the planning board has ever discussed an outright ban on short-term rentals. I can't make that more clear. That has never been discussed. We have discussed limiting or possibly banning certain types of short-term rentals and that may be what's leading to the confusion. And I think it's also important to make sure that it's clear that we are no longer discussing banning even certain types of short-term rentals. We are looking at regulating within our purview to do so. And again, anything that we decide to do is not, if we don't operate as a legislative body, we simply make a proposal that goes to the select board who then reviews that proposal and then they decide whether or not to send it on to the voters for the voters' approval. So anything that we put forth will be our best shot at what we think is best for the town of Camden. And people may agree or disagree with what we do and, and the select board may agree or disagree and, and the voters may agree or disagree. But we don't unilaterally decide these things. We suggest what we think is best and it's based on a lot of hard work by the people on the board. I can't tell you the number of hours that people are spending researching the subject, looking at other ordinances, speaking to other towns, reading up articles. I, I sent out today and I hopefully it will get put in the record and I think Chris O added to it a list of articles and studies that discuss the effect of short-term rentals on available and affordable housing. Because that's been another criticism that we've received, that there's no data. You know, there, there are, there are numerous studies out there that, that discuss the, the impacts and, you know, while to me they seem pretty pretty obvious, I understand that, that, that to some it may seem more tenuous. It's not, it's not a direct fix. And I, the other thing that I just wanted to address really quickly is, once again, this distinction between available, available and affordable housing. We, we are aware that the housing crisis in Camden in particular, there is a dearth of affordable housing. But there's also a lack of available housing, even for, for people with even greater means. Affordable housing has a very distinct definition and we're not talking about affordable house. Now, we would like to address that problem as a planning board and the town as a whole needs to address that. And we are looking for ways that, that the short-term rental ordinance might somehow be of a benefit to the, to the affordable housing. But what we are generally talking about here is housing stock, which is available housing. And so I just wanted to make sure that that's clear because certainly you can say that if we put any of these short-term rentals back on the rental market, they won't be affordable housing under the strict definition of affordable house. And so just wanna make sure that that is clear, that, that we are talking about that, although we agree that affordable housing is as important, if not more important, but as important as available housing. And then finally, the, the, the latest draft, there was circulated one that was just missing one key component and it's just how we've decided right now how we are choosing to qualify the definitions for different properties. Right now, we're looking at it from a perspective of accessory to a residential use. And I wanna be very clear about what this means. This means if you live on the property and you're renting a unit on the property, you do not fall under the other category, which is the commercial use. So if you have, if you have, you know, a rental unit or you leave your homes for a certain month in the summer and you rent it out, you, you will be in the accessory to a residential use and no one has discussed at any point in time capping or limiting those rentals, just regulation, licensing, inspection and registration. Okay? The other category which we talked about, which is also sort of exempted from the heavier regulation would be the seasonally approved camps. These are camps that have traditionally been in the short-term market because they are not eligible to be rented year-round. Those camps are, will be regulated still and registered and licensed. But they are not, again, not part of the group of, because they don't have the wa, the, the insulation and the, and the, the utilities and whatever available for year-round use. They're not suitable for year-round rentals. Therefore, we do not feel that they are affecting the available housing stock and they deserve a, a certain exemption. Doesn't mean they won't be regulated, but they will not be, you know, limited or capped per se. We get to the final category is the commercial. And the commercial, as we see it, is somebody who is operating a rental unit, they do not live on the property and they're doing it strictly for income from that property. And if, 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 if it's not your primary residence and you're renting it out, you are likely to fall into the commercial category. And from there, we are still working on how we want to regulate it, what we think is best for the town, balancing all the competing interests and we are still keeping a very open mind as to whether or not we should cap, what the cap should be, if there were one, and other ways that we can leverage those rentals to benefit the town rather than, than just the, the individual owners. One discussion point that has come up and is the possibility of, of using higher fees for registration for those commercial properties, which would obviously have a positive impact on the, on the tax rolls. The, or not the tax rolls, but just the general budget. A, a suggestion has been made that we think about taking some of those, some of those registration, some of that registration fees and putting it into a pool for affordable housing projects. I think Jeremy threw some numbers out there that, you know, if there was, you know, if, if, if you say you have, you know, I mean, again, these are just spitballing numbers, but say you have, allow 200 commercial rentals. You might see something as high as $200,000 in potential monies to go into some sort of fund for, to support a, an affordable housing projects. And over the years, that might grow to, you know, a million dollars or more and might, might lead to some sort of thing. That's one thought that has been pushed out there, and I think it's worth discussing. And then the, I guess that's sort of the end of my soapbox spiel, and this is a workshop. So I want to, I want to, you know, go back to just getting into a discussion, and I see Chris O's already ready to jump in, so I'm happily yield the floor to Chris O.
No, I think that was a great summary. The only piece that I think that you, you mentioned, omitted that came up with a lot of the feedback and in some of the letters that has been, you, you, you referenced that we're trying to balance all the needs, but without the explicit reference. That obviously, the tourist nature of the town of Camden is a major factor of all of this, and and has been a major consideration in all of these decisions, and has been a, you know, as Jeremy mentioned at the beginning, we have been talking about it for over two years now. And those factors have all been in part of the conversation. And I just wanted to point that one out, too.
Thanks, Chris. I see John's hand up.
Well, so, so given that, I suggest we dive into the proposed draft and march through that as a way of organizing the remainder of the meeting. I don't know how you feel about that, that Ethan is the chair, but Shenley might appreciate it if she get that feedback.
Yeah, I totally, I totally agree. I, I made, I made note of, and then again, Lucia did share her feedback. And Pat, even though, because I didn't know you were here, I copied your email onto a separate document, so I'd have that at the ready in case you weren't able to show up, so. I'm happy to do that. I just want to make sure that we're all operating from the latest draft that she sent out, that Shelley sent out right prior to the meeting that has the proper definitions and categories in it. John, do you have that?
I'm not sure that I do, but we'll find out when we get.
You, you, the, the only, the only thing, the, the only difference is Jeremy indicated, the singular difference is that it has, instead of the non-primary, non-res, non-occupy, you know, all that stuff, it just has commercial accessory to residential use and seasonally restricted camp definitions in there.
Yeah, I'll be able to, I'll be able to function even if I am looking at a slightly out of date version.
Ethan, Ethan?
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, I just want to state for the people that are here, Ethan referred to an email from Pat. All these emails, what we're going to do is we're going to compile, and I said this the last time, we just haven't gotten around to it. The holidays kind of just sprung up on us after the 21st there. Try to put together a short term rental link on our website, which will have a lot of the information that that the board's been provided and the research the board's done, and the report that Granite just provided us, and links to some of those links to all of our, I guess, to all the videos. I just want to share that the board operates in a very, I think you operate very appropriately, and there is no discussion for the public. There is no discussion that happens outside of these public meetings about this issue. I just wanted to share that because Ethan referenced the email from Pat.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Shared, and then if there's any discussion about it, they don't communicate, they don't email, no one emails back and forth about these things. It's just information that is then shared, and then when they talk about it at these meetings, so I just want to share.
So that is, that will, those, those comments will be part of the public record, is what Jeremy's saying, and and we'll put those in the packet. But, but as he indicated, there is no discussion back and forth. It's just someone sending in comments or a mostly to get, get it in front of Shenley. So I think one, one of the things, we had some, some feedback also from Matt, who's unable to be here. I think we're at the, starting with the draft document, we're on the purpose. Matt had suggested shortening the purpose. Not sure how you folks feel about the comments. I think it's pretty important, the stuff that we have in here. It may, there may be some, some wording tweaking that could go on, but I, I would personally be reluctant to, to take out much. And I think those, that that feedback was shared by Pat. Is that correct, Pat?
Yeah, I was in agreement with that. I mean, maybe we could reword part of the purpose statement. But I thought it was important to, as a reminder, that we're still looking at how to get affordable housing. The different health and safety, you know, issues that we want to cover, et cetera. So, yeah. Probably rewording some of it might be a good way to start.
Okay, Chris O.
Anytime I hear it's the rewording, it starts to sound like wordsmithing, which always gets me nervous. Write, writing documents by committee is, is not my particular capacity. That's it. I mean, we can all make tweaks, but I think it's actually a really important thing to have in there. Especially as we go forward in the next few weeks and months of the community outreach and education about why we're doing this, what we're trying to do here. I think that all of those, every piece that's in that paragraph is important to have in, in the chapter. And, and I think it's a good thing to have in our ordinances, but when we look back at older ordinances, we can say, okay, you know, instead of looking at old, at things from 10, 15 years ago and go, what were they thinking? We know what they were thinking because we put this in there.
Right. I think, go ahead, go ahead, John.
I, I, I concur with the importance of the purpose statement. I was pleased to see that when we came up with a set of goals six months ago or so for what we were trying to accomplish, that I can see those reflected in the purpose. So I'd like to keep that connection as much as possible. Having said that, you know, being able to streamline how you say that is always a good thing.
Okay. I, I would, I would say one, one comment that I have is to the extent that we can reference the comp plan, the, the fact that what we're trying to do is consistent with the comp plan, I think that is beneficial and strengthens our particularly as to the housing issue, but I think all of those things would be consistent with the comp plan. So maybe a reference to that.
Ethan, if I may, I want to concur with Chris O's sentiment. I think we've spent a lot of time on this purpose, and the high points are valid and should remain. And I don't think we want to spend a lot of time going down the rathole of wordsmithing. Your, your comment about putting links in, very valid. But I, I think this summarizes nicely all of the conversations the board and thought have have put into over the last months and, I guess, years now, and includes the conver, the conversations with the public.
Thanks, Mark. So we won't spend a lot of more time on that wordsmithing. But if anybody has specific feedback that they would like to share with Shenley and the rest of the group, I recommend doing that via email to Shenley. All right, and I think authority, anybody have anything on authority?
Ethan, do you want Shenley to share the screen of the draft? Is that doable, Shenley, or not? Ethan, I just, it might be helpful for you guys to see it. I don't know.
I'm, I'm hoping everybody's got it in front of them. I, I know maybe the, that may be harder for the public, but I want to be able to see everybody. In case somebody's raising a hand or that sort of thing.
It is on the town's website, on the calendar section where the Zoom link was. It is there, so.
Okay, and that's the latest draft?
Well, it's, it's minus the, the, the definition name, right? The, the, this mess up with the accessory residential and the commercial. That's all, Ethan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well. So I guess as, as we're following along, I guess then we get into, I don't think there's much, I mean, unless anybody wants to jump in on the authority, I think that's pretty straightforward. The definitions are the next, the next primary section. And I think we've got, the only question that we had as far as ADUs was some, some consistency with the state language. Is that correct, Jeremy?
Sorry.
Consistent, yeah.
We're consistent.
Yeah, right. So we have to make sure that we're consistent with the state language, and we've looked that over. Does anybody have anything on just, I mean, we're going down this list on the definition of accessory dwelling unit?
Ethan, the only thing that I know, I think on Matt's draft, he suggested removing it, but my feeling is we really want to keep it in there because any make it as user friendly as possible, and having the definition there does just that, I think. Instead of having a link to go to another part in the, you know, another document within our multitude of documents, I think it's good just to keep it right here.
He's, I think he's on that ship, too. He's, he agrees with that now. Matthew.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We had a conversation, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, Matthew brings, Matt brings together one great tendency, which is to streamline and simplify, and I am very appreciative and aware of the benefits of that, but I agree with Pat that having the definitions in the, in the main document, in the main ordinance are, is important. And, you know, I definitely welcome any places where we can streamline. I don't think this is one of them. Okay, and then we're moving on then to dwelling unit. Is that the next one?
Yes.
I'm getting confused between my two drafts here. There we go, dwelling unit. Anyone have anything on the dwelling unit itself? You see that we've, we've stricken the the part about the less than seven days rental, which used to be the requirement, or is currently the requirement in town, not, not well enforced and not often discussed, but so we, we felt like that, that was actually giving something back, I think, I know, to the short term rental community is allowing for shorter than seven day rentals, which currently are prohibited. And then, anybody else on that? Okay, family right there. One or more persons occupying the dwelling unit. I don't think there's much there. Was there any comments from Matt on that one?
Somebody had a comment.
I have a comment.
Five.
I have a comment.
What was that five comment? Go ahead.
You want mine?
Sure.
A lot of times, I don't know if, I don't have it in front of me, but reading that definition of family, it it's pretty much limited, unlimited, the number of people that can reside in a home. It's just interesting. Lots of people use a definition of you know, family members related by blood marriage or whatever. And then limits it to like five or six, unless it's family related by, again, by blood marriage. I've run into this in the past here in Camden where someone was looking to bring in a lot of people into a a home as a single family, and it becomes an issue, and our definition's really wide open on what. And it might be fine, you might be fine with it, you might not want to tackle that now, but it's just, it's just something.
I think Matt was looking at that same definition that you are, Jeremy, where it's got and maybe that might be who us to add that.
Maybe that, maybe even some statement that says something that that can be legally supported or something, because we know what a bedroom, there are life safety code requirements for the and there are septic requirements for number of bedrooms.
Yeah, I think occupancy is, is, is more important to me than family relation, firstly, given, given the nature of you know, society today and that sort of thing, but
Yeah.
So, you know, I
I, I will also just sort of chime in with some tangential experience on this issue, and the phrase family compound got used for a similar type of property that was up to 36 people sleeping on the property. And that kind of got overturned legally recently, just to basically like the definition of family is way too broad for us to try and, and regulate.
That's fair.
And, and again, I think where we're going to find this, and I, I think, just as a sort of sidebar, I think there's some, some questions that I've had, heard from people to explain a lot of these things will be handled by the licensing component, like the numbers, the life state, like so there's a lot of, I've had a lot of questions, people saying, why isn't this in the document that I can see? And that's sort of, you know, I meant to mention this at the beginning, it's like the ordinance is going to have certain things, but some of the specifics will be in the I guess, whether it's the assessing office licensing and all of those factors.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, so in terms of like numbers, it's a three bedroom house, that means six people, or it's a house with a septic for three bedrooms, that means six people. That's not going to be, those specifics don't need to be in the ordinance.
Okay, fair.
Yeah, it's just, it exists in your short term ordinance, family definition. That's the only reason why.
Right.
The numbers is what I mean.
I don't want to, yeah, let's, let's have Mark speak, and then we'll, we'll move on.
I was gonna say, if we're concerned about the term family, can it, can we just state occupants?
Right, I think that's what we're talking about, is an occupancy limit. And that's a much cleaner way to do it, so pretty much do away with, with the family definition altogether, and and just deal with it from an occupancy standpoint.
Good, okay.
Or say residence or something like that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure that. We'll, we'll wordsmith that one. That's easier.
Break out your roche eyes.
So continuing along, I'm going to just skip the next two licensee and licensing board. I don't think there's much to be discussed over those. So let me get into some of the more, the meat and bones of it, which is the definitions, which I discussed at the beginning. The categories of commercial, accessory to residential use, seasonally restricted, and popped in the middle there is also the definition of primary residence. Any feedback on those?
You know, is there a way that we could relabel the accessory to residential use short term? I saw in one of Shenley's memos she sent out, she had something about just residential short term rental.
I probably did, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think there was some, some discussion, if I recall, about the confusion with accessory dwelling unit and accessory to a residential use.
Right.
And I think that's a valid thing, and I think to the extent that we can avoid that confusion, you know, everything we're trying to do here is make, make it clear to everybody what we're doing. The, I think back, the last time this came up, we talked about it, accessory dwelling unit, it's not going anywhere. ADUs are, are here to stay. So we could consider changing this. The reason why we left it at the time, and and I'm open to, to, you know, again, to discussing, but accessory to a residential use is very much a term of art in the code. That you have that kind of language for like an in-home business. So it's, it, it is, it is consistent with what's already in the code, but I also recognize that it's confusing. So I'm open to, to adjusting it. That's the reason why it was used, I think. But if you have another suggestion, or you're just suggesting then just residential use, short term rental?
Well, the residential a residential short term rental, because we have commercial short term rental. So we could use residential short term rental.
Okay, and just strike out the accessory to.
Yeah, but I mean, they're all residential is the only.
Why, yeah, that's why I think, that's why I think there's some, some need for it there, and that's, you know, again, I, I, I totally get. That's why, yeah, that's why I think, that's why I think there's some, some need for it there, and that's, you know, again, I, I totally get both sides of this, but
Yeah.
accessory to residential use is important insofar as it identifies that it's an accessory use, that it's not the primary use.
Right.
Right.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Can I make a point? Can I say something?
I guess we'll let you speak.
All right, I won't go down rabbit hole too much. How it's laid out, just zoning ordinances have district provisions, sections, right, and if you look at our zoning ordinance, it says things that are allowed, like resource, natural resource uses that are allowed, and then it says permitted uses, and then within that permitted use section, there's residential uses section. And then there, then you continue, then there's a commercial use section, or there's a special exception use section. So I think what we really need to do is just line these up, and I think let Shenley and I figure out how we're gonna put these into the, because you're talking, there's, we're kind of talking two things here, we're talking about a short-term registration ordinance, right? And then we're also having to talk about amending the zoning ordinance to make sure that those two ordinances align and that we allow, allow the, what you're right now calling and talking about, the accessory to residential use, allow those in the certain zones, and then allow, you know, the seasonally restricted cottages in certain zones as a residential use. But then when we get into the, all the other district provisions and start talking about the the unhosted, the non-primary resident ones, that's going to fall under a different category, say, commercial, that's gonna say, you know, residential vacation rentals or something, that's gonna have to kind of, that it's gonna be in a separate category, not with the residential categories that are also already laid out in the district provisions, does that make sense?
So are we going to have zones that qualify for a certain type of rentals?
Yes, the idea, yeah, we kind of have to, the idea is to, again, you're working on two different things here, normally you guys work on short-term or you work under the zoning ordinance, chapter two ninety, but this conversation and this topic is so broad that most towns are doing it like we are, where you have the zoning ordinance addressed, allow them as uses, and then you have the registration ordinance that's in place, or registration code that actually regulates how people go through the process and what rules they need to follow. That's how it's done, so we're gonna, at the same time we're doing this, it's a much easier thing for Shenley and I to do is tweak that, once this whole conversation's done.
Yeah, I want to put a finer point on that, just to, to make clear, Pat, I don't think anyone's discussing having different allowances for different zones. What Jeremy's expressly saying is that, that because our ordinance is done by zones, that has to be sort of incorporated into the ordinance that way. So you have, you know, you have the, the commercials, you know, or the, or the down, or whatever, the village district, and then you have, you know, the, the access, accessory village district or whatever it's called, and extension, right, and, and so each one of those is gonna have to have the same provision, but it's going to be the same provision in all of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so we haven't said, like, for instance, Bayview Street gets its own regulation versus, you know, the, the village district or something like that, so.
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Yeah. Uh, just to point out, the, we're using the, what I think is a pretty standard definition for primary residence. It's defined as, for most purposes, you know, tax and government identification purposes, six months plus one day. And that, and that is, if it's, if the unit is a primary residence, then it will fall under the residential use, short-term rental category. If it is not a primary residence, if someone comes up for three months out of the year and then puts it into the short-term rental market, they would be subject to the commercial category. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, anything else on those definitions? I just want to touch on the short-term rental definition, I think Shenley, we decided that twenty-eight days was our number for the max, for the minimum number of days, just because we wanted to allow that someone might rent for the month of February and not want them to get bounced in and out of the short-term rental.
Got it.
Also, something I learned, this learned is that today is a leap year.
Leap year.
I was, I was, I was actually gonna suggest four weeks, might be.
Okay.
Because that also, that sentence just grammatically doesn't quite.
Yeah, it's awkward.
You've got a lesser few issue and a couple other, and it's a little.
Not, not, not to wordsmith or anything, but no, I think that's absolutely correct, four weeks might be the best way to go, because that is twenty-eight days and.
But if it's, but if it is a leap year,
Yeah.
you could get the twenty-nine and whatever.
Yeah, every four years you could.
Every four years, that extra week is, you know, you know, and that is in a week, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Got it.
Um, transient occupant, this is, you know, fairly new, you know, it's appeared in the last couple drafts, but as pointed out by our wonderful staff, this is a, a standard definition. It's not meant in any derogatory sense, but it is clear to point out that these are people who are not setting up to reside in Camden long-term, they are transient occupants, and as such, those are the people who would be renting these properties. That means somebody that's not here on a month-to-month lease even. Anything on the transient?
No, I think the fact that we have it in there also sort of helps on dwelling unit to not need the family.
Right.
Because, because this sort of clears that up anyway.
Yeah.
And it's funny, I did hear somebody make a comment somewhere about it, of, of, like, transient is a pretty common term in, like, some pretty high-end usages, like marinas, and, you know, there are transient yachts that are tying up in Camden Harbor for a few days, so it's hardly a meaning.
It just depends on how much you follow the news in Portland, Portland, Maine.
Exactly, exactly.
With the camps that they have there.
Jeff Bezos is transient all summer long.
Right, well, if it's good enough for him. Okay, and then, so then we get into kind of the nuts and bolts stuff, and this is really the licensing procedure and things, and, and I think I'm gonna sort of just brush over it, just except to point out, there were a couple of things that I think were highlighted by the comments, and one was the, the transferability, which we're sort of getting to. And also, but I want to stay in this one first, I sort of jumped ahead, the other was the, I think there was a fair consensus that the record-keeping requirements might be a bit onerous.
Okay.
And, and I'm not, you know, I'm not too, I, I don't think it's that hard to, well, I guess I would ask the board, I mean, I'm guessing that this was in a, a different ordinance that it was just copied from, that it wasn't really
Yeah, it's frank and stuff.
Put in by the board as like, this is important to us, but I think there's some value to some record-keeping, and I think we could look at it and say, maybe keep some and not all. I certainly don't think we need to know the names of the occupants or the primary contact. Just assuming that the person that, if there's any legal issue regarding some sort of damage or crime or anything like that, I think that the fact that the owner-manager of that property would be the person to be the contact for that anyway.
Okay.
I personally don't think it's that onerous to provide a history of the rental, I'm pretty sure that on any of the, on Airbnb or, or Verbo, a person can just go and click on a link and say, show me my rentals for the past, you know,
Yeah.
past three years, and it'll show exactly what the dates that they rented it, so unless, unless I'm mistaken about that, and I would assume that anybody with, running a business in general would have those records fairly readily available, but I do want to discuss whether and why we think these, these, these data points or whatever are valuable. Is it to get a better understanding of the nature of the rentals in town? Or is it for some sort of liability or other purpose?
I believe it's just, well, part of it is just having accountability, I guess, and in keeping the records, I mean, you're, I agree, it kind of is a lot of, we just kind of, I just kind of like, got it from another place, you know, just looked at it and it, it came up in quite a few places, maybe not as, as extensive, but.
I think, I think some of it is, is the part of proving that you're not, Matt, over, overdoing your, your occupancy. So it is that sort of thing of saying like, no, here, here are the record, you know, which, you know, we've talked about enforcement of some of this stuff, and that's, I think, where some of this lands in that category of we, we won't be, you know, we're not like enforcing how many people are staying in a rental unless their complaints gets a little bit onerous, and yeah, this data is easily available to anyone renting.
I would say, one, one place it might be very important is the seasonally restricted cottages. And I just say that from, I, I touched on it briefly about the state is looking at their subsurface wastewater rules for short-term rentals and septic systems. And that, I think that rule is, is been finalized, so they're allowing the local plumbing inspector to make a determination on what's appropriate for a short-term rental for subsurface wastewater, I think it's gonna be probably more than the ninety gallons per day that is currently required. Now, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of realtors here, but I think people know that camps that have been traditionally, you know, are traditionally on, on the lakes, we've run into lots of camps that have fifty-five gallon drums in the ground that were put in sixty, seventy, eighty years ago as their septic system, and there's, you know, if they haven't sold, or if there's been no failure, those are oftentimes still in use, and it's hard for the code officer, the plumbing inspector to determine a failure of a septic system unless it's leaching out, you know, on the surface. And we have a lot of gravel, we have a lot of, you know, sand gravel, aquifer soils here in Camden, so things will tend to flow and run and not necessarily always rise to the surface, so I think that's an important piece for maybe those, those seasonally restricted cottages, Ethan.
Okay.
Because how do we, I mean, we're gonna have to get them to a certain level, but how do we ensure that, you know, that they're only having six people staying there or five people staying there as opposed to having fifteen people there week after week after week, that will have a significant impact on a septic system. And that's at, in the wrong location, right, you don't want to have a failure adjacent to a resource like McGuntico or Hasmer Pond, which is probably far more sensitive than McGuntico is.
Sure, and, and so, I guess, yeah, I think, I think yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to Stephen, I, I do want to let him jump in real quick, but I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to finish up on this part. I guess, for me, the, 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 the most onerous requirement or questionable requirement is the, the name of the main contact for the occupants renting the short-term rental unit. I would suggest that that should be the owner-manager and not, because that's not a private, you know, I mean, I don't want to get into any privacy issues about who, you know, what individuals are renting, what places and those sorts of things, and I'm not sure we need to know the individual, the transients that are staying in a place, but I do think you need to have a, an occupancy limit and, and, you know, again, you know, enforcement of the occupancy issue is, is difficult. But having folks certify when they, you know, when they register, that they will adhere to the occupancy limits, that is, and then having the applicable, as we say, stick available if someone were to violate those, some sort of fine or, or loss of license, I think would, would help make sure people are in compliance.
Yep.
Anything else on the, on the, that last bit on the, the records? Go ahead, John.
Jeremy's comments aside, I think we could get rid of the licensing, maintain, the maintenance of the licensing there in section F, and it would not detract from the ordinance. And I think if an issue came up where people were trying to look into past occupancy for a plumbing reason or what have you, you know, the records would still be there on eBay if they needed to get them. And I, I just thought that if we can shorten the ordinance, we can, and I'm still not convinced there's a good reason to require the maintenance of the records for that long.
Obedit. I am going to let Stephen jump in because he's messaged that he's, he'd like to say a few words. Stephen, I will just ask you to keep your comments as brief as possible, given the number of people here tonight, and also suggest that if anybody has comments they'd like to submit in writing, that's a great way to, to do it, and, and if you, if you can keep them to the discussion at hand, that would be terrific, thank. You are, you are on mute, Stephen.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. What I wanted to suggest was something that doesn't change the intent, the purpose or the rules that you've been talking about for this length of time, and the suggestion is that instead of requiring short-term rentals to be licensed, require them to be registered. And I feel the advantage to this is it greatly reduces the town's liability, because as soon as the town licenses something, if anything happens, you know, the lawyers are gonna go after the deepest pockets, and that's gonna be the town. The stipulations you want for licensing could be the same for registering. For example, you can't register a car without insurance, but the town occurs no liability by registering that car. Compliance would be exactly the same, anyone who wouldn't register, wouldn't apply for a license. In either case, enforcement is the issue and is identical for either procedure. It also, by registering, it eliminates the need for that onerous statement demanded for advertising about the town not guaranteeing that the structure meets codes. The other element I'd just like to address would be fairness. If the short-term rentals are forced to put that town disclaimer in their advertising, then so should motels, B and Bs, inns and hotels. And the only other thing I'd say is, I think it's fine to drop the seven-day requirement, but I know that the motel and hotel industry would certainly like to see you say something like a three-day minimum, so that short-term rentals wouldn't be directly competing with motels. And that's it.
That was amazingly concise, Stephen, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Can I touch on his, just answer a couple of comments, I don't want to get back and forth, but we don't have, the town would not have any liability on, on it, on anything, we don't have any liability when we issue a permit for a pier, and the pier fails and crashes into a, you know, a yacht, one of these transient yachts, or if someone gets sick at a restaurant or someone falls in a bathroom in a restaurant, we don't have liability on that, we just don't, there is, the main tort claim act protects the town immensely for all this type of stuff, and I agree, I think that statement can go away, I have no issue with that, that statement going away completely.
Good statement.
The, that there's, the, the one that Steve talked about, about ensuring it, the town doesn't.
The requirement of posting, yeah, the requirement of posting on the Airbnb or other sites, that, that they've met all these things, and then the town doesn't certify, et cetera, et cetera.
That can go away.
And is, there's a difference between licensing and registration, right, I mean, in the legal sense, like, like a license would go with the, the person, not the land. That's also another reason.
Yeah, well, 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 we'll get into that, Stephen, we'll, we'll address it appropriately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, and I'm, I'm gonna, I see Wendy's posted that she'd like to jump in, I'm gonna let her have a chance, and again, I will suggest. Um, and again, I will suggest, as we run this meeting, we're not gonna go, you know, till the, till all hours of the night. Um, but, but it's the extent that you can also submit written comments, uh, we would absolutely welcome that, but Wendy, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, so the only suggestion I guess that I have is you guys are trying to define. What's a commercial, residential rental, et cetera, is it seems to me that. What you're defining is if somebody doesn't live here and they have a home. That they're renting out for income purposes, they basically have a hotel or their own version of a B and B. Um, and while they may stay there for free, just like a B and B owner might stay in some rooms for free, they really have a hotel. So why not just take all these people that wanna have all these short-term rentals but don't live in the home? Um, or don't live there for at least six months and a day, and call them hotels and then have them under your hotel. Um, ordinances, and then it stops you from having to create all of these different categories, et cetera. You can deal with how many hotels you can have in an area through your zoning. Um, but that if you're zoned in as a hotel, then you have to meet all of the business requirements, all of the licensing. So the safety requirements, you don't have to worry about having different rules for people that are. Renting out a home and calling it a home when it's really a hotel, and how many people are using it. How many people are using the septic, they're, they're all covered under the same kind of regulations that any kind of hotel would be covered under. That's, that's my first comment, and I don't know if that's possible, but the second one is, I'm not sure why you're excluding camps. To me, a camp is the same issue, whether you can use it all year or not. Doesn't have some of the same public policy issues that you're trying to address by having more affordable housing. But it has exactly the same kinds of licensing and oversight and. Regulation kinds of issues, whether you're renting for part of the year or whether you're renting for all of the year.
Yeah, I'll jump in on, thank you Wendy, those are, those are helpful comments, and I'm not sure about the hotel one, I may let Jeremy jump on that, but in the first. Just wanted to say, I think I kind of overspoke when I mentioned the camps, they absolutely will be regulated and licensed, um, and inspected. It, it was, when I said that they were being exempted, I meant from the, from the limits, from the caps, if we were gonna impose a cap, um, because we didn't. Largely because we didn't see them as having an impact on the long-term housing market or the affordable, available housing, available housing, because.
Well, well, so, so you, you may not even need a cap if you, if you make all of these properties subject to all of the rules and requirements of. Of a hotel, my guess is a lot of the short-term rentals will be untenable. Um, because of all the requirements of doing business as a hotel, people just won't be able to accommodate that, and. Your issue may go away without the planning board being, being a bad guy.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for your input, that, that's an interesting perspective.
I'll call in.
Everybody do have anything on that, or do you wanna?
Me?
Yeah, on the hotel.
That's a, that's a, that's a huge, um, that's a huge uh, subject there, um. Probably not a good idea for a whole host of reasons, and I, I can definitely put something together for the board on, on that, um, and I understand what Wendy's saying. Uh, but we can put something together, um, we do allow rooming houses, um, those are, that's a whole separate thing, so, um. I guess I can look at that, but hotels and motels wouldn't work, um, for a whole host of reasons, but I'll put something together for you all on that and provide it to. Put it in the packet of information that'll be out there, and I could specifically get it to Wendy too, if you'd like. But I appreciate.
Yeah, I do like the, I do like the sort of the, I, I hate the term out of the box.
Outside of the box.
Thinking on that, yeah, yeah, because it is, it is definitely looking at a novel way to approach the problem, and I, I appreciate that for sure. Um, yeah, you're welcome, Wendy, and thanks for, thanks for joining, um, I guess while we're doing this, uh, it, uh, uh, I'm willing to. Entertain any more comments from folks in the public sphere, as long as you can keep them brief, as we've been seeing from the folks that have spoken so far, I'm, I'm happy to. To hear any comments. And again, if, if you feel like you'd rather submit something in writing, we absolutely will consider them. Okay, I'm not seeing much right now, um, all right, we'll revisit back to the, we'll get back to the document, um. I think at this point, we're sort of on the application procedure, um. It's an unnumbered section now. And all of the requirements, and it's pretty dense.
Yeah.
Have we passed?
But I, but I think necessary, um, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Have we passed by the section that's labeled license expiration and renewal?
No, we're just above that.
Just above it, okay. All right.
I, I may, I may have, um, actually, so, um. Yeah, we, we didn't get, I, I think I may have breathed over the transferability and the license expiration renewal, because. Crystal, you may not have followed, but I was actually moving on to the public section, um, so John, what do you have for me?
Well, I, uh. I recall a comment from our last meeting that. People thought April was pretty late in the season, if you will, to. Be firming up um vacation stays. I don't think there's anything magical about April. And if somebody had mentioned November is more realistic, unless there's a. Logistical reason at town hall that April's important, then. You know, I might take additional input from the industry and. Listen to what they have to say, but November seems like, you know, there's probably plenty of people that are trying to line their. Summertime before April.
Yeah, I think I agree with you there, John, and, and thanks for raising the issue, um.
I think it might be the year before, though, to be honest.
If it's the year before, then, then that's probably pretty good.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm open, I'm open to input on that one too, I, I do agree that, that, um, April, like, basically, the, the dates are. You know, sent, sent your thing in by the fifteenth of February, and then, um, it expires in April, so you've got a month and a half. Knee way there, that's really not a lot, um, and so, um, I don't know how quickly after the renewal license is. Is filled or filed that, that it, that is granted, and whether or not you, if, if we are doing any kind of a. A cap or lottery, you know, not knowing, I agree with all of you that, that, um, but not knowing would not be helpful, so, um. Any further thoughts on this, as far as what would be a reasonable time, if it's April from the prior year, is that? Um, is that more reasonable, and I'm, I'm even looking at people in the industry here, um, what would be? What would be fairest for someone who does have a license, um? What is the timeframe? I see Nick just put his hands up, um, so I'll go to you first, Nick, but I think you understand my question.
Yeah, I've got a, um, I live in Jacksonville, Florida, and I've got a, uh, home that we use fairly regularly up in Camden. Uh, but we do rent it on a short-term basis as well, and I know that a lot of times the folks that, um, that we're renting to are contacting us at least a year out. Um, they wanna rebook for the following year or whatever the case may be, so if it was April of the same year that I'm renting it to someone in July. That would be a big-time problem, in that I may have people that wanna stay and I've committed the place to, but then all of a sudden I don't have a license, I can't allow them to stay in my place. And it disrupts their.
Yeah.
Vacation, it puts a bad name on Camden.
Yep, that's great, that's helpful, thank you.
If it is intended to be April for the following year, then it needs to very clearly state that, as it is right now.
Right.
It just says that the license expires on the first day of April. And.
Well, I think the license expiring, yeah.
Well, but then it says that you have to submit for by the Feb, by February fifteenth of each year, it doesn't. If the theory there is that you're applying for the following year, it needs to. Lay that out, otherwise.
Yeah, I, that, absolutely correct, that's, that's why I think it's great that John brought this up. Yeah, so when do we think the licenses should expire, and when do we think the licenses should be granted? Those are two separate things.
I mean, my. I was thinking that it makes sense to do it at the end of the summer or in the fall, which is where someone is also possibly deciding after another season. Whether they're gonna continue to rent the property. Working on a mostly summer rental theory, but.
Um, Ethan, would it be helpful if Shenley and I, um, chatted with some other towns that are already registering them? Large towns, um, similar kind of geographic as us, and, and see how, that have been doing it for a while, and see what's working for their. Um, you know, their, their industry and, 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 and the town itself, I think. Rather than you guys spending a lot of time trying to pick a date, it seems like picking a date might not be the best thing, use of time.
Love, love, love that idea, and yeah, I mean, I've seen, I've seen some that are like October, November for sure, um, but, but, um. Yeah, certainly, uh, taking into account the comments, that we wanna give people as much notice as possible.
Yeah.
So they can get their bookings.
Just as I'm thinking about it, though, if it is the, if it is sort of a year out.
Yeah.
Component, then that does give folks who have the license basically a sort of. Six-month, I, you know, like an eighteen-month. Knowledge, so that they can book a year, people can book a year out, rather than sort of, oh, it's, I just renewed it for, and now, you know. So I think that the idea of the year out. Is probably a good one for those who have it, because then they know they've got more like a two-year.
Right.
Practicing, if you're, if you've been, your renewal has been approved, you're really kind of in a two-year license cycle. Which for, okay, for early booking.
And, and yeah, and, and I agree, um, I agree with the whole idea of having Jeremy and, and Shenley look that, you know, talk to town, see what maybe is best. And we don't spend too much time getting wallowed down in the details, uh, I did wanna just address transferability, there's been some various comments on that. Um, it says the registration or license not be transferred, it says registration only here, but not transferable. Um, I think we did wanna have an exception for, for transfer to a. A relative, a family member. Um, but it, was I correct in that?
Um, wait, I, I don't have the right copy in front of me, that, I think the transferable was referred, not on this part, but later on, there were some comments. And I, we can make it more clear, but I think it was being, the, the property being transferred, not the license. Cause if your license, it goes with the person, not with the property, so if somebody sells their home, transfers it, that's whatever to the property. That's what this ordinance is addressing, I don't think it's transferring the actual short-term rental license, right?
Right.
Um, just to make that clear, because, and it is probably a little hard to confusing.
Yeah.
It's written.
No, I think that's, that's fine, I think I just wanted to. To sound the board on whether the policy should, should include allowing transfer to.
Okay.
Like, you know, I mean, often, you know, let's just say that, that, you know, the situation is the homeowner die, passes away, and. And the property then moves into, uh, the, someone else in the family or to a family trust, um. Would you want the license slash registration to continue? Um, in that situation, not when it's sold to a private party or something like that.
Yeah, and I mean, the reality is that it would only be the term, remaining term of the license.
Correct.
So, you're really looking, you know, you're not, you're, you're saying that if somebody inherits the property and they're dealing with all the other things of the death of the family. They've got six months before they have to think about that rental property.
Yeah, that does raise an interesting point, um, and I don't, again, don't wanna get too bogged down, and maybe, uh. Jeremy and Shenley can put this on your to-do list, since you have nothing else to do, um. Is, uh, one concern that I just thought of off the top of my head is if someone has, uh, actively booked. A year's worth of rentals and the property is sold even to a private party. Um, forcing them to cancel those regist, those, those, um. Those rentals during that time period of the license already been granted, might not be the best approach, and maybe we should allow them to, to. To continue out that license.
I think that's.
I mean, it. Go ahead, John.
If, if I sort of work this back to the goals that we've talked about in our introductory section. I think it could be transferred and remain consistent with our goals as a board.
Right, because there would already be that part of the cap.
So Ethan, can you just, uh, elaborate on what you said about the transferability of a license?
Well, yeah, since the licenses are not in perpetuity. Right, it's not like you have a license that's granted and for the entire time you own the property. The transferability issue is really limited to the, to the duration of that one license, which is one year. And so, if you have a property, say, that, that someone owns, and it's in the short-term rental market. And then, for whatever reason, that property is sold, but that property is already booked for the rest of the season to short-term rentals. It, it only makes sense that that license be, be remain in effect, and again, it's already a license that fits under the code in other aspects. Um, so it's, it's not a guarantee you're gonna get a license the next year, or those sorts of things. Um, you know, I, I think, you, you know, it's, it's, like, sometimes people buy a house and they buy it subject to the lease, right?
Yeah, no, I, I see where you're throwing now, okay.
But at the same time, you know, if somebody sells a hotel, or for example, has happened recently in Camden. Uh, uh, B and B was sold. And is now being turned into a hu, a home.
Yeah.
And if somebody had booked a year out at that B and B and it's been sold. You know, they just have to change their plans, and I, I, I know that this has happened to friends of mine who've rented B and B. Done Airbnb rentals in heavily regulated communities, and they. Literally like two weeks before their trip, got notified that the property had just been sold and was no longer an Airbnb.
Oh, okay.
So, um, yeah, I think that, I think that that's, if we go down that path, we're just murky-ing things up again. And I think that that's, you know, that's just got something that has to be on the property owner to say, okay, I'm gonna sell this house. And the person who's gonna buy it, it wants to live there full-time, so. Those future rentals, I've gotta think, you know, and that's just on them, in my opinion.
Right, like, all the affidavits, I mean, I don't know about the legal part, but we could ask, we could find out from legal, maybe if they have an opinion on. This particular issue.
Got a little question.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nancy, um, and in a way, I mean, this is like a full circle thing, but maybe it would make more sense for those, um. Those permits to go ahead and transfer with the property, because they're only one-year permits, right? So if you have that case where it sells in the middle of that permit year. And there are already rentals, sure, some people do get canceled out when an Airbnb, I mean, when, when a bed and breakfast, um, sells, but. It doesn't have to be that way, why make it a negative experience? That, that permit has only been issued for a year, it's already in existence. Who cares who owns the building? That permit really is for that building to be used as an Airbnb, so. It might actually be a lot easier just to keep it with that building, because it's an annual thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I tend to, I tend to agree with you, Nancy, I hear Crystal's point, but, um, I, I do actually think personally that. You're, if, once the, once the licenses have been granted, it's already in compliance with our code, our ordinance.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it murkies the water, the, the only concern I can see is if there's somebody's trading in licenses, but trading in licenses for just a year or less than. Um, that, that doesn't seem like a, a very realistic.
lucrative thing, you know?
Yeah.
I'm not particularly bothered either way, I, but I am curious, if. Does that person buying the property then automatically get at the head of the queue for renewal?
There's no head of the queue. No, there's no head of the queue priority, um, other than in the first year, we talked about people who are in compliance would be at the head of the queue. Um, with our registration ordinance, but yeah, I don't see the head of the queue issue being an issue, um. Really, it's just, you know, it, it goes back to, to Nancy's point, is that, um, an owner can. Buy a property and say, yep, I'm canceling all these reservations. But an owner also can buy the property and say, well, I'm willing to let it, you know, ride on this for the, for the rentals that are already in there, and then do whatever I want with it. It just gives more options, not less.
No, I think that's a good point, Ethan, I think we would need to make sure that we get from the new owner. You know, evidence, because we asked for evidence of insurance, right?
Oh, they have to do all, they have to do all the compliance stuff, absolutely.
So they would just need to provide us supplemental information as a new owner.
Yeah, but I'd be interested in hearing what other towns. Yeah, but I'd be interested in hearing what other towns are doing as well with that, um. Because it, the, I think, I think when the transferability issue comes up in the primaries, um. Is if the, the licenses are sort of deemed to be in perpetuity. And then they're just registered um each year or something like that. But if we're doing annual, um, I don't see much problem in. Or concern with trading and licenses.
Thank you for hearing the question. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Um, so then the, the rest of this is, uh, the. Um, sort of the, I'm in the unnumbered section now that I had. Sort of quickly jumped to and it's just entitled short term rental license application and most of this is just the stuff to. Um. To fill out the application itself and will actually be its own section, right, Jeremy? I mean, that's sort of its. Thing.
Yep.
Um, I think the hot button issue is we can go, as you scroll through that, is that there's one highlighted. Section that says X number of licenses. Um, that is, that is no small um. Issue, and um I think that, 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 that is probably where um where we are going to receive. The most feedback, um. I've heard various uh numbers thrown around or ideas, um. I know there are even some members on the board who oppose any cap or think it would be better not to have a cap. Um, there are members who prefer a pretty um low cap and then allow it to grow if, if. If we deem it would be beneficial to uh the town, it, you know, based on review of how things go. Um, I am sensitive, I think, a little bit to the idea of, um. As was indicated by Granicus, that if you grant somebody something and then try to take it away, you run into a little bit more. Of an issue, um. I, I, uh, but I, but I think if we're making these clearly uh yearly licenses, you, you know, for one. Like one year period, um, the owners are taking, um. Taking the uh, the, the, the license with the knowledge that it's a one year license with no guarantee of a, of a future license. Uh, I just saw a notice in the chat. It was too long for me to read while I was also speaking, but I am going to look, see if I can read it. Hopefully I don't disconnect myself. I'm now I'm all over. Yeah, where am I? How did I get over here? Did I go sideways?
Yeah.
We will be posting something next week is my goal, Ethan. I think that's his question. Um, is there some, you can read some of these documents? I, I saw that one come in. Kind of the background information. Was that the one that I?
Yeah, that's sort of, uh, yeah, and, and, um. Yeah, yeah, and, and that, that is something I think uh, uh, we are working on, um, we have done a lot of research. Um, we are putting together a packet that Jeremy will be putting up on the town website. Some of this information has been uh shared before. Um, one of the things that I shared uh just prior to the meeting, so it wasn't readily available to the public yet, but it will be. Is a list of um articles and studies relating to um the effects of short term rentals on the housing market. And um, you know, that's something that one can readily Google and, and, and find, but we are providing those resources as well. Um, and linked to numerous studies that have been done. Um, we are, we are interested in having as much data as we can and, and you know, one of the things that we're learning is. In particular in Maine, um. Most of these rental or these short term rental ordinances are fairly new and so hard data is not necessarily. Um, readily available and it, some of these things are pretty hard to track, like if you. Have X number of uh short term rentals, how many of those that are disallowed go back into the. Short term or long term rental housing market. Any one of us would love to see those numbers and um we are trying to find them and we did have, we have had some anecdotal evidence in various communities that that is actually happening. But as far as having hard data on that, that's a pretty tough one to come up with. Um, but we will continue to dig and we may try to, we'll try to find any information we can on that, but. There will be, again, this document with some links to studies and, and articles on. Um, the effect of the short term rental market on um long term housing, if available and affordable housing and. Um, there, there is certainly evidence that, that there is a significant effect. Um, so, uh. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna make a quick comment before, before we got to the number of licenses. Just under the section that describes the application form. And, and Shenley and Jeremy, to the extent that. You could generally describe the application form. And its completion is a requirement. Some of this detail that you've provided in the ordinance seems. Could be. Um. Moved over to the application form itself and give you some flexibility in the future.
That's a, that's a great. That's a great point, John. We did that with all of the business licenses um last year, actually, when I. Put them all into one, one business licensing code. We really took. Most all that kind of the meat of the um, that stuff is now in an application. So thank you for that comment and we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah. I agree with that and, and just to be clear, I think this, this, um. This part is this, Jeremy, is this going to be separate from the actual zoning ordinance? This is of the licensing ordinance part that we're in here?
Yeah, you're in whatever chapter that is, the unhosted short term rental registration ordinance, that's going to be for the most part. Um scrapped and repurposed into this.
Yeah, so, so just to make clear that people understand and who are following along. We've got the zoning ordinance as one piece and then we've got the, the licensing registration ordinance as a separate piece. It's. Outside of the zoning code and, excuse me. I've had a little tickle in my throat, um. It's to the extent that, um, that, that the licensing ordinance. Is not exactly within the purview of the planning board. We're providing recommendations on it um to the select board. Um, because, you know, our job is to handle the zoning side of things and, and they would handle the licensing and, and that sort of thing, so. Um, that, that is just, just to make sure that that's clear and, and we present this as a package because it has to be consistent across the. Across the both codes, but um that's how we're looking at that. Um, anything else on the, on the? The license application procedure, putting most of this into the application itself is great, like uh John suggested and Jeremy and Shelly have already done. With other uh businesses. Um, getting back then to the overall number, um. And, and what we think is, is uh reasonable or best as an approach. I know Pat. Um, you, you submitted comments that favored starting lower and, and with the opportunity to expand. Um, I will share with the.
Uh, Lucia had mentioned, um. Or you at the end of the last meeting, I thought you had mentioned a hundred and then, um, Lucia mentioned. A hundred to two hundred. So. It's, um, and I. Can't remember how you came up with that number. If it was a percentage of maybe an estimate of what we think is out there already.
Yeah, and I've asked Jeremy to get us what they can, what he can from Granicus. I think this would cost, would actually be an outlay of, of funds. At this point to get more detail on what, what is actually out there, um. And I'm, and I'm open to discussion on what, you know, how we, how we think it's best to approach. I'm operating under the principle that I believe that there are probably somewhere near three hundred and fifty to four hundred. Short term rentals that would fall into the commercial category. That may be high, but I'm not, I would be surprised if it's too high, um. The, I, I believe that the number of uh short term rentals that are in the residential category. Um, which again, we are not talking about capping, um, would be significantly lower. Um, I think there's a significant number that are in the, in the unhosted, you know, the, the commercial category. And so not having a, a, a def- definitive number. Um, it's hard to make a, a, a qualitative judgment now as to what is the best um number to go with. But um I, you know, John, what do you got for me? Some solution, I hope.
Well, just some numbers and they're, they're the best we've got and when Granicus gave their. Presentation to us a few months ago at this point in time. They indicated through their initial sweep. That there were three hundred and ninety eight listings. In the Camden area. Three hundred and thirty nine unique units, they. I've wrote that down. And that ninety percent of those are single family. Residential units. So I'm not quite sure how that translates. But a.
Yeah, the part that doesn't translate is, is the nature of the units. They may be single family, but we don't know if they're. Um, resi- in our new category, residential or commercial categories.
Well, so the point I'm making is, is Ethan, I, you know, I'm for a fairly. You know, I wouldn't mind starting out fairly strict and loosening up as things go. Which I know other board members have a different perspective on, but I think that two hundred number. Is, is justifiable.
Well, cause. I saw Nancy's hand up.
Quick question, when it said Camden area. Was that because the listing said Camden area or was it the town of Camden? Because often when you go for a rental. The rental will say Camden and it's actually often Hope. They're kind of like.
Yeah, I'm ninety, ninety percent sure these are located in the town of Camden, but we will get that information, yeah.
Nancy, Nancy, there was a map. That accompanied these figures. And I can remember it had a cluster around McGunta Cook Lake. But I, I don't think it went out to Hope, so.
They, awesome, they. They very specifically pulled there, th- this company is able to do more than. Than what we do when we go and look.
Well, thank you.
And, and get a little more zeroed in, you know, I think. We have what? Two thousand something.
I'm trying to. I'm trying to get that number, um, I think we're, I think actually we're in the thirty six hundred, if I recall correctly, total number of units. So if you're at, I don't know, I ran the nu- I don't know, if you're at like four hundred. I think we're at thirteen and a half percent, if I ran the numbers right, of our dwelling units total are in the short term rental market. I will say that's a significant number when you look at what other towns have capped them at. Um, that's a thirteen and a half percent's pretty, that's a good sized number.
Yeah, every, every conversation I've had with folks, when I, when I mentioned the three hundred and fifty to four hundred number, their eyes go. Big. You know, they really like, and, and. You know, that's. If you do a quick scan of those listings. Any, I mean, any educated look, I mean, we've had this conversations a thousand times now. You know, the, you're, you're not, if you go to VRBO or Airbnb, you're not seeing. Family homes furnished for rent.
Right.
Like there, it, tho- that number, the three fifty, four hundred is pretty clearly. Um. In this market, they're not residences. And I think, I think we're kind of all in agreement. I think we're all in the hundred to two hundred range. To start. Um, I'd be comfortable setting it at a hundred to start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and again, this is our recommendation. But. And, and we've, you know, there's the, there's the conversation, but. That still leaves however many. Residences and camps and other things that are still being rented, so.
Right, and, and there are, there are ways to stay outside of the ordinance, right, by renting for, for more than four weeks. At a time that, that takes you outside of the short term rental ordinance by definition. So, um, you know, monthly rentals are, are excluded from regulation on that front. Um, and, um, yeah, so. Uh, I don't, I don't think we have to, I think it's good to get a ballpark like we just did. I think, you know, I, you know. In, in some sense, you know, we, we start talking, you know, one hundred, two hundred and I'm fine with like one fifty, you know, or whatever. I'm not even like married to a number. But, um, I don't think it's extremely important that we have that now. I think that discussion will be one that we also have with the select board and, and take their input and feedback. Um, in a workshop because they may have a different idea of what's reasonable.
Yeah.
Um, but I, but I, I, uh, I am, I'm with you guys on this, um, the, 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 the numbers that we're talking about are numbers that I would be comfortable with. And I, I don't know whether it's better to tie them to just a flat cap like a, a, um. You know, like that or like other communities have done where they do it tied to a percentage of. All houses or whatever, but if we're doing all houses, you're looking somewhere under ten percent. Um, for sure, we're, Jeremy's saying something like we're like thirteen something percent. You know, I would have that. It's basically what I would like to do is put that in half at least.
I think Bar Harbor's cap, I think, if I recall correctly, was six percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So six or seven percent might be a reasonable number.
And I, I mean, when we looked at that, a lot of towns that are putting caps on them are in that six to, I think, six to eight percent of, as I recall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, um, unless anybody has any other thing further on this working document, um. I think, um, you know, some of the things that we can do in the interim, uh. Oh, there is one more thing that's highlighted that I guess we should address and that is.
Um, or I mean, I'm sorry, Ethan, I had a question where we're talking about the CEO or designated. Doing inspections, how frequently do we want to have those done?
Right, I mean, that's, we can work with code, right, Jeremy? With them and, and get a good idea. I mean, at least. When they register, obviously, of course, or when they.
Yeah.
Stuff. Um.
Yeah.
Be done.
I, I guess the question likely is. You know, I, I think I have. I don't, I, I don't know, um, I've seen towns do it annually and I've seen towns do it every other year. Um, inspections, you're required to license every year, but you get inspected every other. I don't necessarily like that. I mean, I came from a building official. Background when I was a Bangor, I, you know, things happen in buildings and I know. You know, everyone can think, you know, things are great and maintenance is fine and taken care of, but there are times when they're not, um. And there are issues and I, I think. I think, uh, when we're talking about transient guests, because I think this is a big piece of this. You go to a hotel in a motel, you're a transient guest, you're permitted, I mean, those buildings are permitted for transient guests. You don't know when those bad things happen. Um, and unfortunately they do. Um, you know, the lights aren't working, there's, you know, like people. Don't know this facility, they don't know the home because it's not their home. Um, so they don't even know where an egress window is or where the door to the bedroom is. I mean, that's just the reality. I mean, it, it, so I think, I think having an annual inspection. Um, is, I think, important, um, um, I, I will stick my, I'll, I, I will go down for that one, um, complete with the se- select board.
Yeah.
Um, I think we have. You know, from a, can, can the town do it? I, I certainly think we have the, the staff to do it. Uh, because there are firefighters, we got three firefighters that are certified code officers as well. Um, so our, you know, code and fire really work together very well. We do inspections together. If someone can't be, be somewhere, another one does the inspection. So I think we have as a town, um, coverage to do that, um, especially if we're talking. You know, in the two hundred units of short term rentals in a year, I think we have the ability to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and. And any additional hours, as we've said from the get go, would be funded from the registration fees anyway. Um, so it would not be a cost to the town. And as discussed, how did you all feel about that idea that any excess from the, um, from the licensing registration go into a house? Affordable housing fund?
I thought it was a good idea as long as it. Can be of some substantial value over time.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good goal. But I think Pat's just hit it on the head of. Well, there's sort of two things. One is if we don't, you know, we've. The additional hours that cost, how much does that leave over? So if it's setting aside five, ten thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, that's not going to do much.
It's not, it would be. Too much. Um. And I think if you, you know, there's a few places that have done this. Have similar funds and then they just kind of never really. Use it, like there are towns that have money set aside to build or buy boat launch ramps. And they just kind of dip into it.
So. Yeah, one thing Jeremy had mentioned was like, you know, sewer extension might be a, a one possible use. Which would, you know, would, would encourage development in a certain neighborhood.
I think it's also important to look at what. I, I, I'm just gonna be honest, I, I think some of the, you know, some of these rentals, single family homes are going for significant. Um, you know, thousands of dollars a week. Um, you know, through. Um, you know, throughout the summer. You know, I think, I think it's, it's not unreasonable to ask. Um, uh, you know, for a licensing fee that does. Provides significant funds towards um, achieving affordable housing goals in Camden. We have a struggle um, in the mid coast. Um, to attract um, main state housing um, projects. Um, developers, they need in order to do affordable or workforce type housing or senior housing. They need tax credits to make them work from the state. Um, and incentives from the state municipal governments generally don't have incentives to give to people. In Camden, because we don't really have a um, necessarily um, low to moderate income neighborhoods. Um, we don't, those housing developers don't meet certain, you know, points. On the state's review um, system, we don't have public transit, so we don't meet, you know, um. You know, certain point standards for, for that. There, there's a whole host of. Point system that we don't meet for a developer. If we could, if the town could try to, you know, fill that gap. Um, I think we might see some, some um, affordable workforce housing projects. I think it's important to know, I don't know if people saw the recent population projections that the state put out uh, for Knox County. But Camden is set to become the most populous town in Knox County. Um, I think in the next forty, within the next forty years or thirty five years or something. Um, it's a significant, um. I, I don't know, um, I was shocked by that. So I think it's, housing is a critical piece that we need to um, be looking at. So I don't think, again, I don't think it's unreasonable to have someone that's. You know, um. Has a home and, and bringing in significant thousands and thousands of dollars. I've seen some upwards of over eighteen thousand a week for a home in Camden. Um, to pay an appropriate fee that goes into a um, pays for the program and goes into a fund, but that's, that's my point now.
No, I, I totally agree. I mean, I think if the money, if the numbers work, then. You know, we know there are plenty of communities in Portland and Maine that also require developers to either. If they don't put low income. Units in their project, they have to put money into a fund for low income housing in the town, things like that. I mean, it's a.
I think we're gonna see that coming from the state likely on their rekindled, rekindled housing rule. They're not done with that housing rule that we just passed and we gotta do the accessory dwelling, you know, they're not done with that. I, I suspect there'll be. Um, some mandates with developers, like, just like you said, Crisso.
Yeah, no, it's being, yeah.
Ethan, you asked a question about the, the fund and my response this evening is. Unless we know how it's gonna be used in a productive fashion. I, I don't think it's right for inclusion.
Okay, well, I think there, there's a lot, it's, again, it's just an idea floated out and.
That wouldn't be in an ordinance anyway, Ethan.
Right, right, yeah, it wouldn't be, that's correct. It would just be something to pitch to the select board. Um, right, so it would, would not be in the ordinance itself, so there, there's, there's plenty to be done on that, just wanted to touch that, so. Um, I see we're getting up on seven o'clock and so I'm going to uh, ask if anybody has any further feedback and if not. Um, move to adjourn the workshop and again invite anybody here. Go ahead, John.
Just before, we, we probably can't talk it all out in our remaining minutes, but. I, I, I would like to have a longer discussion on. Uh, the waiting list. Or what I think Shenley or Jeremy have called. Adopt a weighted lottery. You know, I've mentioned before that I think we ought to acknowledge the folks that have. Registered their units and give them kind of a leg up in the, the first year. Uh, and I'm getting a little wobbly. On the idea of a. Of a, a license expiring after one year. I'm not completely. Uh, off of that, but you know, the idea of if somebody's got one and they're doing a good job. For continuity sake, maybe. Um, you know, there's some value in allowing them to continue until they. No longer want to do it, but. You know, I, I recognize that might not be where the board is and I'm not even there yet, but. I, I'd like to have an additional discussion on that.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think, I think, I think the issue only for me, I, I definitely agree with what you're saying. My, my only concern is. You then sort of limit the licenses to those who happen to win the first lottery. Um, and then they only, then you're basically just on a waitlist for in, you know, and, and who knows um, how long it would be before other people have an opportunity, so. But I understand, I understand the point and I even just hearing John speak like considered. Maybe licenses are better for two or three years and something like that. Uh, to give a little more sort of certainty to the whole process as opposed to just always. Winging it and hoping that something happens, so I, I'm definitely open to considering that. I'd like to uh, consider that and do some more thinking on it and um. Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's good food for thought, John. Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate all the, all the input and all the interest that we've gathered and. Um, you know, if, if anybody wants to submit any comments, we, again, we do welcome them. Um, they can be mailed right in. And so um, I'm seeing Ed another question here. Let me just, since we're still in meeting, I'll try to get to that, the profitability. Well, Ed, I, I, I don't, um, I don't have any actual. Data other than to tell you that one instance I know of a property that rented uh, in the long term rental market. This is two years ago for thirteen hundred dollars a month. And then um, when it went to short term rental markets, the profits were over four thousand dollars a month during the summer. Um, or not profits, but the red, the, 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 the rental charge. So um, I, I don't think the question, there's a much of a question about the um, profitability. I was. Given quite a bit of pushback at the last meeting. Um, when I suggested that someone in long term rental might be almost nearly as profitable as someone in the short term rental market. Um, I, I heard a guffaw, a collective guffaw from the audience. Um, you know, it, there, there's a lot that goes into managing a short term rental and it's not easy and so. Um, there may be benefits to going to the long term market, but then I heard some people saying, you know. Long term tenants are the worst because you can't get them out, you can't get into the property, you don't get a chance to inspect or clean, all these other things. So I understand the various competing things. I don't think the um, the profitability of the short term rentals are, are, is much in question. But as far as actual data, um, other than my anecdotal evidence. Um, a quick look on uh, Airbnb or Verbo, what it costs to rent uh. A place for seven, seven days in, in August in Camden and you, you get a pretty good idea of how profitable it might be.
Also, I would add, add to that, Jer- Ethan, uh. There are a couple of pro- uh, there are very few properties for sale at all in Camden and ha- that's been. The case for the last few years of things that are, you know, things stay on the market. And I've seen in a probably a good. Thirty, forty of the listings, I've seen phrases like. Great short term, great be, great short term rental revenue maker, great. Income from be Airbnb. I've never seen one that says. Could be a rental house.
Uh, yeah, Nancy, you had your hand up. You might have some insights.
Oh, yeah. The, i- it is true that ninety percent of the time, the short term rental will bring greater revenue than a long term rental. And yet I have both and, and I cherish my long term rental. Much more than my short term rental. I curse my short term rental all the time. But until I look at the dollars and then suddenly I'm not so mad at my short term rental anymore. Um, but the, the question I had kind of along what Ed was talking about. If you look at the one short term rental I have, it says it's like, I think, two hundred bucks a night. But a lot of the times that those figures get um, negotiated down. Uh, and, and that, and or, or it's a seasonal change too, so it would be hard to quantify that. Unless you start looking at people's income tax returns and no one's gonna want to hand you that, you know.
Right, right. I mean, it certainly, certainly the data is available from the individual. Like Airbnb, you can see what somebody uh, netted or gross, I mean, in profit. Uh, from their rentals, if they wanted to share that information and I encourage any owners who want to tell us they're not making money to do that.
I know the short term is definitely a better income route, but it doesn't mean it's always the best route. For the fit of the property itself. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Nancy. Alright, well, thank you very much, everybody. I'm gonna move to adjourn the meeting here. I've tried, this is my third try, Crisso, this is it.
Well, I only want to figure out when our next meetings are.
Oh, that's on the agenda.
Cause I know we've, we've talked about, it, well, Shenley put, it's on the agenda of the eighteenth and the first and then. A possible workshop with select board, so just wondering what. When we think that might happen.
Shop is still out there.
I'll try to get the select board, um. To try to, at least, um, I'll chat with Tom to see if we can get something um, figured out with the select board next Tuesday, um, at least try to narrow down a date from them.
In a sense, there's like, you know, what would be most helpful is to have the, the draft as well. Done as we can, which we're really getting towards. And then provide that to them that they can read and, and understand and, and even submit questions. I don't know how much is to be gained in a, in a. Face to face, but I know that that's been the desire.
Let's finish this and then um, schedule that um, and get maybe a month out.
So my, my question then is, are we? Are we still trying to get this on the ballot in June?
Um, I guess we'll see. Let's shoot for the first, um. Let's, let's try to get this with the select board within the month, um, that will give us February and um. I mean, the ordinance is pretty well drafted. So February will give us time to have a hearing in mid March at the planning board level with zoning amendments. Um, you guys don't need to do the hearing on the short term rental registration ordinance, that would be the select board. Um, so the hearing with you folks, in that would be, that's a pretty easy. Uh, tweak amendments in the zoning ordinance for Shenley and I to do, so I think we could do that pretty quickly. The select board would have to hold their hearing on short term rental in April sometime, Crisso. To get to June, so I think, I think it's reasonable. If that's, you guys want to go, I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's keep, let's keep trying and, and if we don't make it, we don't make it and we hit November, but. Let's keep going for it. It's, it's, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of delay and, and. And so I'd like to see, just keep moving it forward and.
That was all my thing, cause like I, I look at it and, and the, it's really there. I mean. You know, we could keep trying to tweak it, but I, I think for our input is. Is, I think we're, it seems like everyone, we're all pretty happy with it as is. You know, we should start, start moving that ball.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thanks, Crisso. So uh, looks like we're scheduled for our next meetings on January eighteenth and February first. I'm not sure what's on the agenda for those, but. More on peers.
Maybe we'll try to have something on peers and maybe some tweaks to chapter two ninety to facilitate what you guys have done to this ordinance.
Got it, that'd be great.
I'll be gone that first week of February, just that way.
I mean, you'll zoom in?
Possibly, but there'll be a time change.
Sounds good. Alright, here's my last shot at it, moving to adjourn. Um, no second required, uh, to bring the gavel down, which I don't have, but anyway, thanks again, everybody for all your work on this and um, thanks everybody for attending.
Thanks, Ethan.
See you later.